I will now call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the final agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes from the August 17, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. We are now moving on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item for our agenda tonight is item 3.1. Consider a variance for the swimming pool fence enclosure requirements for 6455 Hawks Point Lane. This item does include a public hearing. Before opening the public hearing, I will now turn it over to Planning and Code Enforcement Technician Isaac Peterson for staff presentation. Isaac?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, as mentioned, tonight for your consideration and discussion is a request to consider a variance from the swimming pool fence enclosure requirement for the property located at 6455 Hawks Point Lane. The applicant is Mr. Jeff Wigan, who joins us this evening. He's the property owner of 6455 Hawks Point Lane. The subject property is located within the Lake Minnetaka Residential District and Shoreland Overlay District, and the proposal is to construct a swimming pool adjacent to a bluff without the full enclosure of a five-foot safety fence. So, as the Commission is probably aware, City of Victoria's zoning code, Section 18-11C1, Swimming Pools states that all underground pools and above-ground pools over 5,000 gallons and/or more than two feet deep at any point and over 150 square feet in surface area shall be required to be enclosed by a five-foot safety fence. All gaps in the fence must be four inches or less, and generally, the fence must be constructed of corrosion-resistant material. Generally, this code is intended as a safety feature of the City of Victoria zoning code to prevent swimming pools from existing as attractive nuisances or attracting people to enter swimming pools. So, the variance request proposes to construct a swimming pool seen in front of you here, located adjacent to the home that's being constructed on the property, along with, in the green lines before you, a partial fence running the course of the western property boundary, and then a part of the eastern and northeastern property boundary, along a bluff line that exists adjacent to Lake Minnetaka and the proposed pool itself. As you can see with some of the relief here, there's a significantly steep slope leading up to the house and proposed pool location that's inner about 50 to 60 feet in elevation change from Lake Minnetaka. So, the fence is proposed to wrap around, enclose and gate off some stairs that lead down to Lake Minnetaka, and then the remainder of the perimeter would be enclosed by the home itself. So, the property owner, based on their narrative submitted for your review tonight, is proposing the variance request based on the following rationale, that being there is a unique component of the property in that it contains an existing bluff adjacent to Lake Minnetaka and the proposed pool location, and in order to maintain said bluff and maintain access to the bluff for erosion control and vegetative maintenance, a break in the fence is needed, along with the presence of the bluff itself in combination with a five-foot safety fence and auto safety cover, along with some security systems that are proposed to be in place, such as cameras, are as safe or safer than just the five-foot safety fence by itself. So, here again is another graphic kind of showing the topography and site and situation of the property. You see in red is the bluff area, along with a proposed pool in green, that's kind of boundary and you need to show that shows that dynamic between the bluff and the pool itself. And we can, of course, come back to this as you see fit. So, as the Commission is aware, City of Victoria zoning code guides the Commission acting as the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to grant a variance if it meets the following criteria, one being the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by code, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner or previous landowners, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, and economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties in the request. The Board may impose conditions in the granting of variances. A condition must be directly related to and must bear a rough proportionality to the impact created by the variance. And code also guides the Commission that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals will not recommend and the Council will not grant variance unless they find the following facts. One, the strict enforcement or interpretation of the code would result in a practical difficulty or undue hardship inconsistent with the intent of the code. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property, use, or facilities that generally do not apply to other properties in the same district. Granting the variance will not adversely affect the public's health, welfare, and safety, and will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood, and granting the variance will not allow use which is otherwise not permitted in the zoning district in question. So, in general, as with all variance requests, the Commission must find that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, and no variance will be granted unless there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances applicable to the property, use, or facility that do not apply generally to other properties in the same district. Staff's assessment, in this case, natural features such as bluff topography or steep slopes may be used as a rationale to demonstrate that there are circumstances unique to the property and could be considered a hardship that would restrict the property owner's ability to build in a manner that would otherwise conform to the zoning code. In relation to this request, the Commission should consider whether the placement of the fence adjacent to the bluff and where the proposed location of the pool is would adversely affect or impact the property owner's ability to maintain the bluff itself, as generally bluffs are, areas that are guided to be protected by code. And the Commission should also consider whether the physical properties of the bluff, in combination with the pool cover proposed by the applicant, and other safety measures are as safe or safer than the five-foot safety fence that would otherwise be required. So, that would do it for staff's presentation. The applicant, Mr. Wigan, is with us this evening, and he may want to address the Commission and give some background on his project. Other than that, there is a public hearing that would be required for the variance itself, and all properties within 350 feet of the property were noticed of this evening's public hearing. So, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, and if I could stand for any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much, Isaac. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who wishes to comment on this item?
It would be, or no?
That's it?
No, I'm sorry.
So, anyone, anyone at all? Okay. So, hearing no additional public input, Commissioners, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. The motion carries, and the public hearing is now, is now closed. I will now open the floor for Planning Commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Can we go back to the picture where the, the actual home and the fence and the distance between? No worries. Have you, have you looked at looking, putting the fence directly behind the pool, like, and to, you know, just to enclose the pool instead of having it further back in the bluff? I'm just trying to wonder.
Yeah, we did.
Mr. Wigan, if you could come up to the podium, yeah, and just introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm Jeff Wigan. I currently live on Lake Wasserman. It's my, this will be my third property in Victoria, so we've enjoyed it here very much. We sought a property in Victoria on the lake, which, as you might imagine, is very difficult to come across, and had brought out a geotechnical engineer and soil engineers before acquiring the property. To answer your question, we did look at that. The consensus from those that we brought in was that because, sorry, because there had already been significant erosion, that there needed to be enough space to accommodate potentially large backhoes and dump trucks. So, rewinding for a second, for those that don't know that neighborhood very well, the original property owner was, was an individual that founded M L T Vacations many years ago and was one of the investors originally in Sun Country Airlines. They subsequently, unfortunately, the gentleman passed away. The wife ended up with the property and sold it to a developer. There were two parcels on the lake. The other parcel next door was subsequently developed. The original home was on what is now my property, and their pool was on the next-door property. They had a tram down to the lake, and it was terraced with railroad ties. My side was never, there was no erosion control whatsoever, so unfortunately, some of it was allowed to sort of let go. And so now, we're kind of left with this, this legacy that we knew going in would be a maintenance headache, potentially. And so, we are, we began last summer by trying to remove some of the invasive buckthorn and replant some structure that will tie the soil together. We're, we're beginning with 5,000 plants, and we expect that there'll probably be somewhere around 25,000 plants by the time we're done. We looked at boulder walls, we looked at all kinds of different options, and the consensus was there was no way because of the height to be able to do that whole 60-foot gap from the lake to the top of the bluff. So, vegetation, we consulted MinDOT on kind of what they do, the University of Minnesota. That seemed to be the best option to hold things together. So, the other thing, I think, and it's unfortunate because Laura's not here, but Laura, as it happens, is a friend of mine and has, I've had her out to the site twice to look at this to give us some advice on what she thought. And there really is no way to climb this hill. I know you can't really see it because, you know, pictures don't really do it justice, but I think certainly Isaac has been out there. You know, the, the people that are installing the fence, the person that installed the tram down to the lake, even the geotechnical engineer, I provided letters from them highlighting the fact that there's really no way, unless you're a trained climber and you have equipment, there's no way to navigate that. At the top third is at a 70-degree slope, so there's, there's really no way to climb that. So, from a life safety perspective, and we're sensitive to that, my wife and I have two boys that are nine and 13, so the last thing that we would want is somebody to get into that pool. But you'd have to, you'd have to come by water, take off your life vest, have climbing gear to ascend the hill, and then get into my, my pool that would have the locked cover, get by my security system. And if you had a life vest on, one would presume that you, you're making a conscious effort then to, to get into my pool without a life vest, which I know there's a lot of hypotheticals out there, but I think that the, the prospect of somebody getting into the pool that way is exceedingly low. But we acknowledge the importance of a fence, which is why we're saying that on the front side, on both sides, that it's vital that that be there. So, there's no way for somebody to get up through the, from the lake, across the steps because that'll be locked, and it'll be locked on both sides of the, the home.
If somebody went adjacent to the property, down the neighbor's property line from the cul-de-sac, would they be able to go around the fence on that end? I wasn't worried about the lake shore. My concern is, you know, kids are pretty creative.
You got around.
And I, I mean, we have a pool, we have a cover, we have a gate, but the thing that I will say is you have to let your pool breathe every day, pretty much, in the summer. And so, we're not, I mean, we don't always sit out there and, you know, it's important, I mean, it's going to be open at times. That's just why the belt and suspenders is both in play. So, I'm just only concerned about the sides. Like, is there a way from anyone to access it, not from the lake, but from the other side?
Sure. Excellent question. Thank you. So, incidentally, the, the property to the left, as we're looking at this, they also have a pool, and so, we actually will share a fence that runs further than what's depicted there. I, I had, as crazy as this is with this whole COVID situation, but I had to bring, I didn't have to bring, I chose to bring in some 18-foot arborvitae that had to be trucked in from Illinois. So, that whole side of the house, from the garage all the way to the lake, will be solid trees touching in addition to the fence. So, there's really no way they'd have to, they'd have to climb over the fence and then get through the trees, which are tight, tight together. And certainly, you know, the other neighbor has a pool as well. On the other side, you would have to go down the steep bluff on, on the right side and walk all the way down to the bottom where those stairs are shown, and then you'd have to ascend the stairs, but then you'd be faced with the locked gate at the top. So, yeah, there's, there's no way that a, a kid could possibly, unless they, you know, pick the lock or cut the lock or something along those lines, there would be no way. But that would be, I suppose, the case in any situation where you had a gate that was locked.
Yeah. I mean, and the gate, I mean, people can open the gate. That's not, I just, it's the, I just wondered about getting around on that side.
Sure.
And if the arborvitae's came down, like, because you don't have to keep the, that's the only thing that concerns me, is just to make sure that, you know, that side is protected. I'm, I don't think I'm as worried about the other side because of the topography. It's this side that might be at risk, and I know that you need room for your equipment, but, you know, I don't know what the distance is from the bluff, step back to the bluff line, if that's 12 feet, if that's eight feet, if that's six feet. I don't have the architectural drawing to tell me the scale.
I don't remember exactly what that is. I would say that, you know, oh.
You know.
Commissioner Murray, Chair, members of the Commission, the bluff line shown here is approximately 20 feet from the edge of the pool deck, and then it'd be 30 feet from the edge of the pool itself.
So, feasibly, you could fence the pool and still have 20 to 30 foot for a piece of large equipment? Is that wrong or right?
Yeah. The problem with it is, is that you can't turn around. So, for example, if you bring a dump truck in, or if you're bringing in equipment to remove, like, for example, I mentioned to Isaac, I have a tree down. That can't be left on the bank.
Yeah, you have to get it out.
So, I have to get that out, and from what the tree people are saying, there's.
To cut it and bring it up.
Yes.
Yes, you do.
And then to get it up there, and then, so they don't want to bring it all the way to the street because it's quite a distance, so they're going to want to bring their equipment back there, but then there's no way to really turn around because it's fairly narrow. So, and, and I would, I guess I would argue that no matter the scenario, whether the fence were on the back of the pool and there was no pool deck whatsoever, the reality of it is, is that somebody still has to ascend a 60-foot cliff, and I don't know in, in what scenario it would be easier to get over or up a 60-foot, 70-degree cliff than it would be a five-foot fence. And that's, again, we're, we're super conscious of the life safety thing. That's the last thing that we want to contend with, but I know, we looked at a property on the Woodland Cove development out in Minatrista. The developer there had one lot, actually, two lots that were joining left. It was $600,000 to fix the hill that had let go, and insurance doesn't cover that. It will not cover for a landslide event. So, it's really up to us to. So it's really up to us to to maintain that. And we're kind of left to our own devices to do that. There was, in fact, some trees on that bluff line that were undercut because the bank is gone. So I don't exactly know what we're in for long term, but we're going to make every effort from here on out to try to stabilize that. I've cringed throughout this year and a half process while the construction has gone on because we haven't been able to solidify the the bank yet. So all the runoff from the roof ends up in the backyard, and then it goes down that hill. And and so we're going to fix that with with drainage and move that away from the the pad there. But every day I worry about something showing up there and having something happen where part of that hill lets go because all of a sudden that 20 feet becomes 10 feet or whatever it is. But, so, I hope that answers the question.
How are you planning on getting equipment in there?
So.
I'm trying the same thing, like, oh, I'm trying to envision, like, a backhoe.
The one, the one locked gate looks like a double.
Is it an eight-foot gate?
Looks like you can open that.
Yeah, the intent is to make that nominally at least eight feet, potentially 10. It's hard to visualize, but there's, there's a lower garage so they can go to the right side of that right driveway that kind of angles down there and sneak around there and and get around. You know, when we laid the house out on the property, it was done with that specific purpose in mind because we knew going in that we would have to spend some time and energy and money to maintain that hillside. And that after advice from experts, I frankly was a little bit shocked when I was told that we'd have to potentially bring backhoes in there. But if you think about it, the only way to to get down, you know, if you're scooping trees up or you're trying to to, well, in fact, when the the tram installation people were working there, they had to be, they had to tie off to the vehicles sitting atop just with their climbing gear because there was no way to to navigate it. So whoever's working down there is going to have to, is going to have to tie off to something, whether it be a backhoe or a skid loader, whatever it is that happens to truck, whatever it is that's up there on the top.
I guess, Mike, it's just a curious question on why they placed the house where they placed the house. I mean, the pool was proposed to be a pool there. The ordinance has been here forever. You knew you were going to have to put a fence on the backside. Why wasn't it all shifted closer to the street or further away so that you could allow for the fence and still be able to get access to it? And I guess, I mean, I haven't been out to the property, so I don't know exactly the lay, but, you know, why things weren't shifted?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I'm not 100% certain of that. I will just say that the developer created the pad. And so we sort of worked off of the the pad that was available and and built on. I think part of it too was the fact that what we were told is the way that the other house sort of angled toward this property. If you kind of look at the the image there, it had to be, I guess, pulled forward, or the the pad was pulled forward so that they, it would be more separation, I suppose. So that's what we were told.
I'm just saying, why didn't it shift even more toward the street or the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I guess.
It's not like you're, you know, got a setback issue.
Yeah, I guess I truthfully can't answer that because I wasn't obviously involved in how the development was laid out or how the developer elected to create the pad for the property.
And if I may, Commissioner Coon, Chair members of the commission, I believe, and although I wasn't around at the time when Hawks Point was approved, part of the grading plan helped by the cul-de-sac, the slope relief kind of comes down towards where this house pad currently is. You can see right here, there, there's a retaining wall that was called out with the the master grading plan of the development. And then on the other side, I believe, the house itself was compressed by the bluff line that it was facing on the along Lake Minnetoka and then on the south side as well to kind of squeeze it into that pocket where it's currently shown. Or at least that's my historical context on how the house came to be in its current shape.
So if you fence the pool, you would essentially lose your deck because you'd have to fence it right up to the pool. Kind of, you might get another three feet or, you know, a a walking path. But you would lose your pool deck on the lake side of the pool.
Correct. Yeah, and to put some perspective to it, the pool deck on the other side between the house and the pool, I think, is what by code, isn't it 10 feet?
Correct. So the Commissioner, Chair members of the commission, the setback from the, from a structure to another structure is 10 feet in the city of Victoria, which is why you see that separation between the pool and the house itself.
I guess the other deal, I mean, even if you put in a fence, I mean, you could still have like a sliding gate. You know, it wouldn't be one that opens but would slide back and forth that would give you access, you know, for turning around if you need to or whatever. I mean, I just don't know, that fence doesn't take up that much space. You know, as far as if you need to get equipment back there, you're coming around from the other side of the garage. And I mean, they put in sliding fences all, you know, sliding gates all the time. So it's not like you could have two sliding gates back there that wouldn't have to remove the fences. They would just slide apart if you need to get into them or or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not sure. When we had the fence contractor give us options, that that wasn't one of the options that they provided. I don't know why that is, but I would say that, again, part of the other concern here is, you know, obviously, you know, we'd like for there to be a a deck around the pool. That was the intent from the beginning. And and so if we rewind the clock, I had Paul, who was a tech at the time with the city of Victoria, come out. And, you know, this would have been very early in the process before the house plans were even finalized. And we walked the property and had these discussions. And the intent at the time was to, you know, verify any concerns that might be there before the final house plan was crafted. And the consensus was, after having walked the property, that there wouldn't be any issues based on his review. And so that's how we chartered our path. So it's it's not necessarily a case where we didn't do our due diligence. We involved the city from the very beginning before we solidified the house plan. I certainly have the emails from Paul. And, you know, we, we kind of crafted the strategy, expressed to him how we were going to handle the the bluff maintenance.
Did you express to Paul that you weren't going to put a fence on the backside and you were going to relay on, rely on that bluff? Or was that a conversation you had?
Yeah, in fact, we stood down at the bottom, down at the lake, and walked that whole thing. So it's hard to see, but where the tram goes, it was graded at some point. What what we were told is that that was used with the previous homeowner and use that to get their snowmobiles down to the lake in the winter. So that's where the tram goes and and the stairs. So we walked that and, you know, he agreed and acknowledged that, yeah, there shouldn't be any concern here. There's, there's no way that you could climb the hill if the concern is life safety. A 60-foot cliff provides a far greater encumbrance to get into a pool than a five-foot fence.
I 100% agree on the bluff side. I think it's just that corner and getting around that corner and.
So.
And I can't see it, it's really hard not being at the property and going, could I get around there? Does that, is that even scalable? It might not be.
Yeah, I think the bluff provides the adequate safety. What I'm struggling with is it's really nice not having that fence there for you to enjoy the lake view from your pool deck.
Well, yeah, I understood. There is, though, on our landscape plan, that whole bluff, that line will have a hedge on it, a low hedge. And the reason for that is because, number one, I don't want somebody to roll off of it, a kid or a lawnmower guy or whatever. But right in front of that will be a swale with some brain tile in it because we've got to run the gutter water across the property and down into the ravine on on that side. And so if you looked at the property right now, if you had the advantage of being able to see the property right now, the the tree line below, right? So the trees that are planted at the lake level come up probably 10 feet above the top of the bluff. So it's not like we're losing a view there. So I understand what you're saying. I would never want to cut those down because I think, number one, it would look goofy. But number two, I, we need the canopy there to help protect the bluff. So we're really sensitive to that piece. Commissioner Murray, are you referring to the corner on the bluff side?
The corner, you're right, Isaac, you've got it. Kind of, not at the bluff, but where you have your fence line ending, which the fence along the upper garage and down that one, so it's going to end at the bluff line there. And I don't know, you know, what the, it shows, it's obviously a pretty, but I don't know if this, what's this, you know, scale of that decline? Is it two feet? And I can, I mean, kids are amazing when they want to go swimming.
No, that's an excellent point.
So I just want to make sure that that can't be. I mean, maybe you pull the fence over to provide some kind of corner, but I don't know if that, it's just, can they go around? I don't know.
I'm glad that you brought that up. So when we spoke to the fence contractor, I had that very discussion with them. The individuals next door to us don't have any kids.
Yeah, but they change.
Well, no, no, what I was going to say, though, is despite that, I still wanted protection, whether it's a dog or a grandkid or whatever. So what we intend to do then is to run the fence over the bluff. So like five or six feet past the edge of the bluff? Does that make sense?
Yep.
So then you'd have to go down the bluff and around the fence and then back up. But there's really no way to do that. So, but there would, so thus, there's no way to get around. You can't get around the fence, number one. Number two, there's 12-foot arborvitae's that run right out to the edge. So with the fence extending beyond the bluff and the arborvitae's running all the way to the edge, there's no way to get around it. So I think that that mitigates that risk of somebody from that adjoining property attempting to get around the fence and in. So if we extend the fence out over the bluff.
So this drawing kind of shows it ending at the bluff line, but you're saying that it would actually extend five to whatever? I mean, I don't know how far you can get it with the, because you're going down a hill.
Yep.
So it's a little challenging there as well.
But we did talk to the fence people about that. And they can put a footing in there. We talked, in fact, one of the other options that we talked about is what if we put the fence down the bluff? And the consensus was that it would be too steep for them to get their footings in. But they said we could do it at the corner right there. It it's hard to see and envision the topography here, but on the other side, where it crosses the steps, the the upper right corner of that lift carriage platform, which is elevated lift platform, that corner is about eight feet off the ground already. And and so we're going to run the fence right up to that corner. And so you got a five-foot fence there, and and it's already eight feet off. You know, it's really steep there as well. So there's, there's no way. The only way somebody could get over that is is if they broke the lock. And so we, yeah, there's some photos there that.
I actually was going to come. I was like, I really want to go see the property. Like, I read through this and I was like, I have no concept of how to.
I would welcome anybody.
Because it is hard to tell.
It is. I would welcome anybody to come over and see.
And usually your neighbors are, you know. I like that the neighbor next door has a fence, but they could always remove it too. But they have a pool?
They do.
And is their fence right behind their pool or is it further down the property?
So they, yeah, so it's interesting. So now they're in the process of, I think there's, there's, they're doing some, like, an addition to the house. The reason that they have the fence where they have it is, number one, there is this completely terraced with the railroad ties. So there's no erosion concern. Number two, they have, I think, three small dogs, and so they wanted to keep them closer into the yard.
So Chair, members of the commission, I think this image number three probably demonstrates the relief probably the best. So that'd be looking from, I'm going to juggle here.
It's kind of the back, right?
Right, from this, roughly where the the platform for the tram is now looking to the west of kind of where that drop is.
So is number three essentially viewing it as if you're on the prospective deck of, by the tram?
Yes, I think that's pretty accurate, yeah. I think, my eyes are not great.
What's that?
Yeah, so that's, this is exactly where you were just referring to. So we have since installed the platform.
Then, so just a quick question.
Sure.
So from where your granite steps are, because I agree, no one's going to say, I think I'm going to summit Jeff's Hill.
Sure, yeah.
Nobody's doing it.
I don't have anything better to do this afternoon, so I'm just going to get, I mean, that's probably not a realistic scenario. What is realistic is that somebody will say, wow, these are beautiful granite steps, and I think I'm going to try to run up them and then figure out how am I going to leap the fence? So are you, if, it sounds like you're going to have a gate on the stairs, and then there's a short section of fence that's going in between that gate and your deck.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
And that's five feet from the stairs. Is there anything below that fence to bring you down to the slope so that you don't just have somebody coming up underneath the fence?
Yeah, so maybe I didn't explain that very well. So that five-foot fence would go down, follow the topography down, and it would tie into the post that.
It ties into the metal post that's supporting the deck that's driven into the bluff.
Yes, absolutely correct. And I should note too that, so there's, not that I've counted, but there's 87 steps there. And I will say that the steps, for what it's worth, were more expensive than the tram. The only reason I put the steps in there, well, two reasons. One is because if the tram ever got, was out of order. But incidentally, the gentleman that lives, the couple that live on the other side are, he's the former, well, he founded the Minneapolis Heart Institute. And so he's all about cardiovascular health. And so he's got a set of steps. Now, he does also have a tram, but even in his 80s, he prefers using the steps. So from an exercise perspective, it's great. But the truth of it is, is that since we've. it is, is that since we've owned the property and since the steps were installed, they've probably been used a couple of times. The reality of it is, is that that fence will remain locked and probably never used.
That's going to hurt.
Yeah, we did, it does. We did have an instance, though, earlier this summer, in which the tram stopped in the middle. And that was less than ideal, sort of my worst nightmare. And so I was able, fortunately, to get ahold of the company that manufactured that, and we figured out a remedy to get down the hill. And then they had to come out and service it. But those things are not infallible, which is why we elected to put the steps in there. Because gosh, if you had to wait a month or something for somebody to come out, that would be kind of less than ideal if you couldn't get down to the lake at all. The dock that's down there, because of the topography, they have to hang the dock and the boatlift, they have to tether them to the trees so they don't slide down the hill. So it's interesting to watch them work. They come over with a crane on their barge and they lift it up and then they tie it up on the trees there.
Any other questions?
Have you, with your fence contractor, discussed the potential for a security spike arrangement at the end of the fence? So that, because that's your real risk, right? Somebody will grab the pole and kids, they'll swing around and then they'll be able to get on the other side of the fence and then come back up. I mean, I think you've seen over in Excelsior how the docks have the spikes that stick out so that people can't swing onto the dock and.
So on to the, oh, you mean to the dock itself or?
No, no, not to the dock, around your fence, your fence corners.
But if that goes, if you extend that, say, I don't even know, whatever's capable, five, whatever's, I don't know, you've been there, so you know what the distance. But if that was extended further, then they'd be, it'd be a little harder, but that would be another piece of safety. I don't know what those look like.
Yeah, I mean, we, I'm open to anything there.
It'd be easier to climb down the hill and swim in Lake Minnetonka.
Trust me.
And to swim in the pool, that's true.
Absolutely.
I think.
Absolutely. I'm not, you know, the lake farm, I'm not worried about it at all. I just don't know, you know, and I'm not even worried about the neighbor because the neighbors know it's there and they have a pole and why'd they come to yours? But it's the kids that maybe don't have the pole down the street or driving up and saying, hey, let's go see if these are empty houses.
Yeah, let's go play in that pool, yeah.
But that's the only thing that concerns me.
No, and I'm in the same camp. That's the absolute last thing that I want is there to be. I would never want to live with that kind of guilt. So we acknowledge the importance of a fence. So there's no issue there. It's more making certain that we have the ability to get the equipment in there when we need to, which is probably going to be an ongoing thing, at least for the next probably five years. We're trying to figure out how to best handle that. But I really feel like, and even on this side, again, because of the grade, anything from what would be the east side to the south side would be really difficult to navigate. So.
So you'd be okay with the variance for five years?
For the?
The fence.
Because you just need it for your bluff.
You needed five years' worth of equipment coming back in there to stabilize everything?
Well, so what I meant by that is that for the next five years, we're going to have to probably, listening to the experts, we're going to have to probably kill the buckthorn that has been allowed to take over there and then continually trim the trees. That's going to go on in perpetuity. I'm just saying that probably over the course of the next five years, in terms of planting new material, we can't do it all at the same time because there would be too much, we'd be disturbing the soil too much. So we have to do it in sections that they say it probably is going to take five years.
I just, I thought you had said that your heavier equipment needs and stuff would be over the next five years. So I misunderstood.
Oh, no, and I apologize. I probably didn't, I didn't probably say that very well.
It looks like the distance from your deck, your actually pool deck, your pavers or whatever you choose to lose, that going to that deck of the tram is about eight foot if you really have an eight-foot fence in that. So is your heavy equipment going, because they're going to have to come down your property line, they're not going to be able to go in your neighbor's. They're going to come in, assuming they can get in the eight-foot fence there, if you don't have to go to 10 or 12 to get them in, or you have a sliding fence even there. Because I mean, I don't know how a backhoe gets in an eight-foot fence. They don't.
Yeah, and to be honest, we have not entirely concluded what that dimension is going to be.
Yeah, it might be bigger.
So, but that gap there is like 28 feet.
The big one on the right, yeah. You could do something bigger.
Yeah, we could do something, perhaps what you're suggesting, whoops, sorry, what you're suggesting with some kind of a sliding mechanism or it's, however that needs to work. I guess, to be honest, I never really measured.
You're looking at the measurement from the corner.
I'm thinking the corner of the paver deck too, over where you have the tram platform, because that's not a big distance. That's like 10 feet, if this is architecturally correct. I don't know if it is.
Yeah, and it's not.
12, it might not be.
Commissioner Murray, members of the Commission, so this drawing is not to scale per se?
Okay.
And then I guess backtrack and appoint, I believe you asked, you know, kind of what this dimension is. And it kind of sounded like tying the leg of the fence over. So for reference, the house to the adjacent property line is 10 feet. Yeah. So tying this over 10 feet would look roughly kind of in line with where the pool deck is shown.
That's actually not a bad solution if you think about it. Pulling the fence, so if you, on the bluff line, if you pulled your fence 10 feet into the edge of your pool decking, so it's not really blocking your view, it's not eliminating, you know, you're not having to put the fence up against the pool and have that and not be able to have a deck. It could give you that protection around that corner. I don't know, without seeing it, it's kind of difficult to say. And really, it just turns the corner.
You still have to maintain the bluff in that area, though.
That little piece. But it's, if you're 10 feet in, you know, most backhoes have a reach. They're not going to be up against the fence. I don't know.
Have we given consideration to, instead of asking for a variance to remove a fence, potentially talk about the variance to the fence material itself and you simply enclose your pool area with glass, like you're going to enclose your decks, to keep errant, I mean, you're trying to keep at its core, people from more or less wandering into the pool, almost unaware, maybe at night. And because as we well established, kids are going to hop a fence to get into a pool. Your fence as proposed and the bluff, your next-door neighbors is going to be where kids are going to hop a fence and go into a pool. So we have a, we have an ordinance about fences. Maybe one potential thing to examine is, is that railing structure something that could work aesthetically with your design? And then we talk about giving you a variance to the material and be able to keep the safety and give you the room for equipment to come in, to be able to maintain that bluff. And if you, if it's sitting and looking at views, then once your bluff is done, then you extend your patio on the other side of the glass fence and drink your beverage of choice from there.
So good point. I think the consensus in talking to the people that we had out there was, it wasn't so much about the view, like I say, because I can't, if you're sitting on the pool deck, the trees come up higher than that anyway. So you can't really, I mean, it's hard to describe, Isaac has been out there, the trees come up over the top of the bluff line. It's really, again, more about the maintenance component. And I don't know how many people, I know the next door on the other side also has a pool. There's several, and then the next door people, to them have a pool. So there's a whole bunch of pools there.
Are they all fenced, though?
Yeah.
See, there's the tough part. Every neighbor has to fence to know.
True, but they don't, nobody else has a.
I don't want a fence either, but I have one.
Has the bluff to contend with from a maintenance perspective. And that's the only reason that we're really here. Again, I.
Well, you're putting in a fence, you're just, because if you just fenced the pool deck, you would not necessarily need what these other things might be perceived as more of a security fence. I mean, it's that you're really kind of carting off a bigger area than you're using the bluff as one component of the fence.
Correct. Yeah, and I think from what I've heard, there's an acknowledgement that the bluff is a deterrent. So if it's really about life safety, if that's what it comes down to, which I acknowledge, I think that's the whole reason that the fence ordinance is there in the first place, then, you know, thus the reason for the request for the variance is, I don't think there's any way that somebody climbs that. I think we maybe, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think there seems to be an agreement on that. It really then comes down to giving ourselves every opportunity, whatever that needs to be, to ensure that we maintain. And it might require, you know, if part of that hill lets go, you know, it's, it's a major fix with lots of heavy equipment, more than a single backhoe and it's dump trucks and it's whatever it is, it's going to be required steel. And so in any time, in talking to the fence contractor, any time we're removing sections or whatever, it just changes the integrity of the fence. And that's not really what it was intended for. So I guess my ask is, if you're willing to consider the fact that the bluff is the deterrent, from a view perspective, I'm not gaining anything by virtue of having the fence there or not there, because I can't, the trees come above the bluff line in the first place. It really is about protecting that investment. And, you know, to your point, Mr. Kuhn, you know, the lot is 1.95 acres. And so one would think, gosh, you know, you've got a big enough, but if you consider the amount of that portion that is bluff, then it's not nearly as large as one might expect. You can't utilize so much of it. So, and that Isaac had mentioned earlier, that boulder wall is a legacy feature that was there. From what I was told, the original homeowner put that in. And so we never thought about moving it. We were just trying to fit the house, you know, within all the setbacks and whatnot that were at play. So that's kind of how we ended up where we did.
So, so based on our conversation, Mr. Wagon, give us some feedback on what, what you take from this, from the, from the overall discussion from the group.
Sure. Well, number one, I appreciate you all giving me the time here because I know that there's other things on the agenda. And so I'm thankful for that. You know, I guess what I'm hoping to do is to provide some insight into the little world that we live in or will be living in one of these days. And hopefully an acknowledgement that we're going to make every effort to try to, to maintain that property and keep it in its original condition. Obviously, I have a vested interest in that. But, you know, again, from a safety perspective, the last thing that I want is for that to be an unsafe, unstable area for anybody, my kids, somebody else's kids standing on that bluff, or somebody mowing the grass, or whatever the case is. So I really want to make every effort to do anything that is necessary to keep that intact. They had a small retaining wall at the top that was in actually one of those photos. That, that retaining wall has now fallen down the bluff. So as you can imagine, I'm extremely anxious to try to get ahead of the erosion and water management that exists on that property.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the fact that, that we will be having some wet years coming up. And so that, that certainly does present, one of the, one of the observations is, I was looking through all of the material.
It's on SOS. Do you have any, the only numbers that can get through to my phone when it's in glare?
One of, one of the, one of the observations, as I was reading through all the material and looking at the information that you had provided, and we were in Washington DC and the suburban area of Washington DC, and there's a huge amount of decorative metal fences with, with spikes. And, and they're, they're in all, just about every area, either within the city or within the suburban DC area. So if that's, you know, if that's something that can be utilized and.
The spikes, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point. I did inquire, that is an option. We could certainly put spikes on the tops of those things.
Was actually Julie's thought at the same time.
I think it was actually Greg's, for the spikes. Yeah. Or some kind of protectorate to keep them swinging around that side.
Oh, I thought you meant on top of the whole fence.
Yeah, on top of the whole fence.
Yeah. I mean, I'm open to anything with regard to that. I have, I have no issues with any of that.
Here's my take. We had a situation similar to this, well, a little bit different earlier, and there was a lot of discussion regarding pool covers and the type of pool cover and how safe those are versus a fence. And there's numerous studies out there that an actual pool cover is safer than a fence. I take a look at the fencing and what you're doing here in the bluff, the intent of the ordinance, and while we would be, you'd be seeking the variance from that ordinance, we're not going to have three-year-olds stumbling across and popping through here. You might, I can't see a 16-year-old deciding, well, these three other houses, we're going to go jump in their pool. They don't have a cover and they're a hell of a lot easier to get to, so let's go after this one. So now you got trespassing, trespassing 15 and 16-year-olds. How much can we do to protect you from them? I think the intent and the fact that you are concerned about the topography, concerned about the natural resource, concerned about the environment is something that we should consider offering the variance on. Because you could put the fence up and say, no, we'll see what happens with it. We're not going to work on it because in order to work on it, we got to pull the fence out, we got to pull the shrubbery out, we got to pull half the deck out, eh, we'll just leave it. So that's where I'm coming from with your concern about the actual bluff line and the intent of the safety of the area. So.
I agree.
Very good. Yeah, I mean, it is, it is hours to make it work.
Sure.
Somehow or another, either within what has been presented or with some restrictions at the same time. So.
Sure.
We're certainly not here to stop anything at the same time, but within the parameters. Any, any other, any other thoughts on it?
You know, I get what you're saying, Christian. I have a pool and the pool covers open a lot. And if the fence wasn't there, people could wander into the pool. Because you don't keep your pool covered all the time. In the summer, you have it open, you have to open it for breathing, you have to open it to clean it, and you're not always out there. There's not a regulation in the city of Victoria that if I have my automatic pool cover on, I have to not be, I have to be there. So, and we have cameras and, and, you know, something could happen anywhere. I don't think we can prevent everything. I think for me to, to be a yes vote in this would need some kind of protection on that corner. And I don't, I'm open to what that is. I think whatever is reasonable, but, or to be able to have someone who has seen it, and Isaac, you've been there, if there's no way to scale around that bluff, then let me know. And I mean, just around this corner and you can.
You could scale the fence around that side of the bluff? I don't know what other fence is going to deter you.
Yeah, so.
I'm going right, I'm going right over the lots.
So if there's something I'm missing, and I might be, I'm just saying, if you can go around that, then, then you can go around it. If you can't go around it, then it's not a concern. But without seeing, you know, because I would assume the topography where you have it shown, it's flat up until that pace. So it would be no different than me swinging around, you know, any corner at that point if it's flat. Now, if it goes, you know, 10 feet down in the next three feet, then it's not, you know, somebody's probably not going to jump over and risk their life to get over the bluff. And I just don't know what that looks like.
Commissioner Murray, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I would say, having walked out here with Jeff pretty extensively, to accommodate that, if that's something the Commission wanted to reflect on and add a condition to, staff would probably recommend extending the fence, not towards the bluff, just because with the challenge of maintaining the fence and the bluff itself and to avoid tearing it up whenever that fence needed to be replaced, would be to tie it in six to 10 feet along the corner to have kind of a dog-like coming in. But it is significantly. of a dog leg coming in. But it is significantly steep up there. Can't say me and Jeff raced up the side of the slope here, because probably neither of us would get up too far.
I thought you said that one of the posts were going to go into the bluff where it starts to go down.
Yes.
So, isn't that meeting the...
That's what you had mentioned. It's just not really shown on the drawing. That's why I don't, it's hard for me to understand it from the drawing. I'm just trying to work the two out.
Even if you went 10 feet this way, you know, with the dog leg, and put spikes that Greg was talking about, because I'm just thinking, you know, you have teenager, and if they're rung like this, they're just going to step, 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 step around it until they get to the end. Well, now all of a sudden, they're at the end, and they can't, if they have something, you know, they can't swing around.
Sure. Yeah. I agree.
I feel like a dog leg makes it easier to swing around, because you have something horizontal that kind of works.
I think so, too.
Something straight line with some, the degree of deterrence.
That's exactly it.
My fellow commissioners know that I grew up in the city of Chicago, so getting around is part of your DNA. So, any kind of spikes or things to deter, just coming around it, that's where your safety, to me, that's where your safety issue is. Nobody's coming up the bluff unless they're really intoxicated or on something. The stairs, to me, seem like your place of, your point of entry. So...
Sure.
Having that area secured to your lift so that somebody can't really, like, if they get on the other side of your lift towards the lakeside, they're in serious peril of falling. They won't do that. And my safety concerns are probably alleviated with just figuring out where, how to secure those termination points of the fence.
I would be happy to work with the city or the planning commission to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to jump in. I think I'm piggybacking on what you're going to say, Mr. Wigan, but I might recommend, if the council or, excuse me, commission is leaning towards granting the various variants and looking for a condition, just perhaps indicating enhanced safety requirements on the western corner as approved by staff or as reviewed and approved by staff. That then allows a little bit of flexibility for Mr. Wigan.
Just grease the last pole.
Yeah, there you go.
They won't be able to grab, they won't be able to grab onto anything.
Laser wire. So, with Mr. Wigan and Isaac can work together and figure out exactly what is that, is it an extension down, is it spikes coming out, is it a combination of the two? But I think this, from the staff perspective, I think we know what the commission is looking to see there, so we can probably leave that condition a little more general, just indicate some enhanced safety condition.
Yeah, and that might add some comfort to the adjoining homeowner on the other side, that somebody can't sneak around and get into their pool, potentially from my side.
You said you have a 13-year-old and a nine-year-old, Mr. Wiggins?
I'm sorry.
You have a 13-year-old and a nine-year-old?
I do, yes.
They will become an 18-year-old and a 14-year-old, so they will endeavor to go to your neighbors just as easily.
Yes.
And that may be, you might be doing yourself a favor by...
By having something there, yeah.
Make something, so...
Might be invited over.
Yeah, right. Right. Yeah, you know, I don't see that as any kind of an insurmountable. I think that there's a way to solve that there. And I admittedly didn't probably do a very good job of, I was kind of rushed, because Isaac was like, could you get us a sketch?
Yes.
I haven't sketched anything for a long time. So, I apologize that it's not to scale, and I...
That's okay.
I did the best I could, but I did not do a very good job of showing what that would look like. But I did have the conversation with the fence contractor, and there is a way to find a solution for that, whether it be spikes or extending it out. I'd be happy to work with Isaac or whomever.
I still have somewhat of a concern of over by your lift carriage.
Yes.
And trying to figure out a fencing solution that secures in between your stairs.
Sure.
Deck, the lift, and then perhaps maybe even a short section of something on the other side of your lift carriage, so that this, where you have the galvanized pole pounded in, so that there isn't something that makes it easy to come up the steps and across that and up.
Yeah, so that platform will have a glass rail on all sides.
Okay.
And then, you don't really see it there, but the carriage actually lines up within a quarter inch of the platform. So, it comes up, there's a little step on the carriage, the cart thing. So, it lines up really close to that wood that you see there. So, that gap that you see there, between the carriage rail and the...
It's more underneath, I think, is what you're concerned about.
Underneath it, and trying to get up, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, so, that's particularly steep right there. So, I think, on the side, you kind of, you can't see, we could certainly run the fence and intend to run the fence in a way that there's no way to get around it. So, that would be something else that I could work with Isaac on, to ensure that there's no gap there, if that's the concern. I'd be happy to do that. I think that would be something we could do.
I would call for a motion with the issues that we have discussed. Put into that motion. Would you like to do that, Julie?
No. I would not.
I'll give it a try. I make a motion to approve the fence variance for 6455 Hawks Point Lane, subject to working with the city on protecting the perimeter fence on the western side, and also by the platform.
Excellent. Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Real good. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. At the same time, I think the, you know, the security cameras, that's well thought out, obviously, and being able to connect to your iPhone.
Yeah, right.
That's a good, it's a good thought. So, thank you again.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anything else? Anything else for me?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wish the Capitol Police had as lengthy of a conversation.
You think?
While protecting our caps.
I second that.
They're not paid as well.
The second item of discussion is item 3.2, an amendment to zoning code section 22 dash S, shoreline district regulations. This item is also a public hearing. Before the public hearing, I will turn it over to Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Marty Dole, for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, I do have a very brief presentation, and then we'll turn it back over to you for the public hearing and discussion. We are here to talk about an amendment to the Shoreland District Regulations Ordinance. Just a little bit of background, as you'll recall, after several months of discussion, we worked through an ordinance in November 9, 2020, which was approved by the City Council revising those Shoreland District Regulations. On May 4 of this year, and it coincided with the recent development of the Hunters Brook property, the DNR sent a letter that was included in your background packet that asked for the addition of the Chaska Creek Tributary to the city's list of classified tributaries within the ordinance. So, from that letter, staff had discussions with the DNR, and under the thought that we want to make sure we get every lake and tributary that's in our growth area included into the list, so we don't have to come back and amend this ordinance each time a new development is brought into place. So, another tributary was identified. So, as you saw in your background packet, there are actually two tributaries in the growth area that are being recommended to be amended to the ordinance list. So, we did provide that amended ordinance. You saw the draft in your background packet, which included those two tributaries added to the table. Sent that to the DNR, and they did provide their conditional approval of that ordinance amendment on August 25 of this year. So, again, those two tributaries are the Chaska Creek Tributary, and then as well as an unnamed tributary that's a little farther west in the growth area. You can see, we are proposing to add those as numbers 13 and 14 to the table of tributaries. And also, as was included in your background packet, you can see the location of these two tributaries. The Chaska Creek, which cuts through the Hunters Brook area and continues west into the city's growth area, as well as the unnamed tributary that is to be added to the list as well on the far west side. Should be noted, and it was included in your background packet, that the addition of these two tributaries should have no impact on any of the previously approved developments. Those that are in that area, including the Rolling Hills South, which is in the south part of this parcel where Chaska Creek cuts through, are adhering to the shoreland requirements related to tributaries, so no impacts. Also noted that these, the city's shoreland regulations won't come into play on any of these parcels within the growth area until such time they are annexed into the city. We really are just trying to make sure our list is inclusive of all of those shoreland areas, so we don't have to amend it each time at development. So, with that, staff is recommending pursuant to that DNR request, that the planning commission recommend adoption of the attached ordinance amending section 22 dash four, shoreline classification and land uses of the Victoria zoning code. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Chair, for the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you very much, Marty. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who wishes to comment on this item? Yep, please state your name and address, sir.
Dave Keschnack, 10100 Victoria Drive, Chaska. I have just one question. I have time to call Marty and direct it to Marty. What basically are going to be the differences from what is existing and what the DNR, you know, we have the other solid parcel yet? How is that going to affect that? I guess that's the big question.
Yeah, and just a little background. So, Dave and Chair, members of the commission, so the way that the Shoreland District works, as you all will recall from our last year discussion, any land within 1,000 feet of a classified lake is considered a shoreland district, and then that land within 300 feet of a river or tributary is considered a shoreland district. So, when we're looking at these tributaries, we're talking an area of 300 feet on either side would be considered part of the shoreland district. In a lot of instances, there's wetland, delineated wetland along those creek. I know the Chaska Creek specifically, there's a lot of delineated wetland that eats up quite a bit of that 300 feet anyway, which makes that whole area undevelopable just based on wetland. But in instances like the Welter property to the south of your property, the only requirement they really had to meet was any of the development within that 300-feet radius, they had to make sure that 50% of that was maintained as open space. So, they were still able to, they've got houses and building pads that are within that 300-foot area. They just had to make sure that 50% of that whole area is maintained as open space. So, that's...
That's basically hardcover.
Correct.
You know, is what you're looking at.
Correct. Yep, correct. And that's really the only impact that I can foresee with the tributary being added to the list.
So, I have enlarged lots, and it doesn't really affect, you're more, it's more pertaining to the clustered development or, you know, density.
Right. And really only within that 300 feet. So, the rest of the property outside of that 300 feet, the shoreland ordinances would not be, would not come into play. And tributaries and rivers do not have their own lot regulations like those shoreland districts that are from a lake. They default to the underlying zoning, so whether that be R1 or a PUD or whatever that ends up being.
Okay. So, it's minimal.
Correct.
Pretty much otherwise following in line as to what you guys were requiring from the past.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the chambers? Okay. Hearing no additional public input, commissioners, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I will now open the floor to planning commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I just have one for Marty, if I could. Has the city's council reviewed the adding of tributaries that are not within the legal boundaries of the city, and have they given us opinion that it's okay? I mean, I get that you're saying, this is somewhat of a housekeeping item, so that we don't have to do it going forward, and that's a smart use of resources. I'm just questioning from the legal perspective of having an ordinance within the city's ordinance book that covers an area that is not within the city's legal boundaries at present time.
Commissioner Vaske, Chair, members of the commission, yes, as part of our ordinance update process, when we updated the entire section on the Shoreland District Regulations last year, that was part of the discussion. We actually do currently have other tributaries and other lakes that are not within our boundaries that are included in the list. In fact, if I can speak frankly, I was a little bit frustrated when this came through, because we had asked multiple times to have them all listed, so we wouldn't have to come back and do this again. But there is a caveat within the ordinance that states that these, you know, that the lakes and tributaries are only governed by this ordinance once that land area is within the city. So, the city attorney has okayed that. City council had previously approved the ordinance, which included some of those areas. So, it does not seem to be an issue.
Thank you for clearing, clarifying that for members of the commission that were not...
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other thoughts, any comments on the issue? Hearing done, I would call for a motion.
I move that we recommend the city council adopt ordinance amending section 22 dash four, the shoreline classification and land uses of the Victoria zoning code as presented.
Thank you, Julie. Excellent. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. The motion carries. Our final discussion item is item 3.3, residential zoning district discussion. This item is for discussion only. I will now turn it over to Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Marty Dole, for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, as we've been talking about since we drafted our work plan earlier this year, the item on our residential zoning districts and PUD is one that is a topic of discussion for the planning commission to thoroughly review and provide any recommendations in the future of potential changes or amendments to any of those ordinances. As staff was preparing this presentation for this evening, it became very apparent that there is enough material in these areas that it's going to encompass more than one meeting. So, our intention is to have this as an agenda topic for each of our upcoming meetings for the next three, four, five, however long it takes to get us through all of the different areas. And really, what my intention would be is to provide some background and provide some initial staff, things that staff have identified in these areas, to just start getting the gears turning and people thinking about it. Obviously, we can have some discussion on some of those areas. There's likely going to be questions or additional information that the planning commission would like to see related to these areas. So, we'll be taking notes on those things, so we can bring those things back forward in the future. So, really, no decisions needed at this time, not even necessarily a clear direction at this point, because we'll be reviewing this in pieces and then trying to tie it all back together and having that more in-depth discussion at a later date. So, with that, I will jump into the presentation. So, as was included in your background packet, just a little bit of an overview of our zoning districts, our residential zoning districts. So, in 2017, the city council established the residential zoning districts that are noted on your screen. There was an R1 low-density residential, R2 single-family residential, R3 medium-density residential, R4 high-density residential, and LMR, which is Lake Minnetoka residential. Once those were put in place, it was determined shortly after that by planning staff at the time and the planning commission and city council, that the R1 and R2 districts were just too similar. Both essentially had become single-family, low-density zoning districts. And in fact, that it came to a point, and again, this predates both Isaac and myself, but it came to a point where, when development was coming in in the city's growth area and was looking for rezoning from egg, it became kind of a dealer's choice as to what zoning they wanted to take, R1... they wanted to take, R1 or R2. R2 being much less restrictive, smaller lots, smaller setbacks. That was the zoning that was chosen at the time. And the Planning Commission and the City Council decided that wasn't necessarily what they wanted the R2 district to be. So in June of 2019, that R2 district was changed and some other minor amendments were made to the zoning district. So the districts that are currently in place as of June 2019 are R1 low-density residential, that's our single-family zoning district, R2 two-family residential, which is really just for two-family or duplex-type homes, R3 multi-family residential, which allows townhomes semi-detached and multifamily homes as principal use, R4 high-density residential, which would include townhomes, row homes, and multifamily, and then, of course, the LMR, which is the single-family area around the Lake Minnetonka Shoreland District. So this map, as well as a link to a digital map, was included in your background packet. This one's a little difficult to see, but as you can note, a large majority of Victoria is zoned as R1. Many of those R1 zoning districts have PUD overlays, as we know. This is our LMR district up here in the orange. You can see a few spot parcels that are darker orange, those would be zoned R3. The red is our commercial business district. Blue is the one industrial parcel, industrial zoned parcel that we have. And then these lighter orange in this area are the R2 single-family zone districts that were approved in that time between 2017 and 2019 before the R2 district was changed. And then the green areas are egg-zoned, most of the parkland, so Three Rivers Park District and Arboretum is zoned egg. And then there are a few remaining remnant egg-zoned parcels within the city. So as I mentioned at the beginning, I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about both of these two districts. First is the R1 permitted principal uses. So these would be the types of uses that would be allowed in an R1 zone district without any conditional use permit or any additional approvals. That, of course, includes single-family dwellings. That includes state-licensed residential group homes serving six or fewer persons, municipal facilities and city parks, places of worship, utility services, schools, nursing homes, retirement communities and care facilities, daycare centers, and then golf courses, country clubs, clubhouses, swimming pools, et cetera, private recreational businesses of at least one-half acre in size. Along with those principal uses, the R1 district allows a list of permitted accessory uses. Those include one detached garage that cannot exceed nine hundred square feet, an accessory storage shed not to exceed nine hundred square feet, greenhouses not to exceed nine hundred square feet, privately-owned recreational facilities such as swimming pools, sports courts, tennis courts, home occupations, temporary buildings needed for construction, solar collectors, docks, and patios and detached decks. In addition, R1 does list two conditional uses. So in order for a use to be allowed in a zoning district as a conditional use, it does need to be listed as a conditional use in the ordinance for R1. That includes commercial use antenna towers on city-owned buildings or structures, as well as accessory dwelling units. So moving on to R2 permitted uses, you'll see very similar language, but a little bit different. So R2 permitted principal uses includes those single-family dwellings that were approved prior to June tenth, 2019. And as I mentioned, we do have a few developments that used that zoning at the time. Now, currently, the only permitted housing use or residential use would be the two-family dwellings. And then similar to R1, this district also allows state-licensed residential group homes, municipal facilities, places of worship, utility services, schools, nursing homes, daycare centers, and those private recreational businesses. Permitted accessory uses are identical to the R1 permitted accessory uses with the exception of the size of the detached garage, storage shed, and greenhouse is reduced to six hundred square feet. And then the conditional uses in this R2 district are the same as R1, antenna towers on city facilities and accessory dwelling units.
Marty, and just for a quick sec, on R2 number four, the municipal facilities, is the omission of City Park just something that didn't get transferred over from R1? Or is that different?
I can't state that for certain if that was a typo on my part or if it's not noted in the ordinance that way, but it is one of the things that I noted in your background and will get to in this presentation. There's a lot of inconsistencies between language between these two districts, which is one of the low-hanging fruit that I think we'll want to work on fixing as we move forward. But I can't recall off the top, do you have it pulled up? If it, yeah, so it does just list municipal facilities in the ordinance for R2.
This is on your cleanup test.
That's on the, on the cleanup list, yeah. There are a number of inconsistencies that shouldn't, at least in my opinion, be inconsistent.
Okay, so would then the size of the golf courses in acreage be something that's also on that?
I think that's something that we as a group will want to talk about. That are those sizes appropriate? That's where I'm getting into now next is the bulk regulations, which speaks to the sizes and setbacks, and I think that'll be part of what this Commission will want to discuss in further detail is are those bulk regulations adequate, appropriate, that sort of thing. So moving on to our bulk regulations, the R1 single-family home bulk regulations, this is one that this Commission has likely seen or heard us talk about quite a bit. It's kind of our base standard for R1 single-family zoning. That includes a minimum lot area of twelve thousand square feet, width of eighty feet, depth of one hundred and thirty feet, thirty-foot front and rear yard setbacks, ten-foot side yard setbacks each side, max impervious surface of thirty-five percent, a max height of thirty-five feet, and a minimum floor area of eighteen hundred square feet. Moving into some of those other principal uses, you'll note that most of them include a thirty-foot front yard setback and a thirty-five-foot rear yard setback, with the exception of the private recreation business or association use. This would be like the clubhouse that the Hunters Brook development had proposed, would be working under that private recreation business or association use setbacks. The side yard setbacks for these other principal uses are twenty-five feet total with one side being fifteen feet. You can see the impervious surface maximum is a little all over the place, ranging from thirty to seventy percent depending on the use. And then max height is, differs from thirty-five to forty feet for those other principal uses. The accessory uses also include bulk regulations. This is something that Isaac reviews frequently in developments and when zoning permits come in for things such as detached garages and sheds. So all of these items have a forty-five-foot front yard setback with the exception of temporary construction buildings and solar collectors. Rear yard setbacks for these accessory structures is ten feet across the board, which is relatively standard. The side yard setback for each of these is six feet each side, with the exception of patio or detached deck is five feet each side, which probably should be six feet since we require a six-foot drainage and utility easement. So another thing that I've got on my checklist. And then the garages, storage sheds, and greenhouses do have a maximum height associated with them, as well as the solar collector. I didn't include it in this table, but the solar collectors, if they're ground-mounted, they can be fourteen feet high, otherwise they can't be higher. If they're roof-mounted, they can't go higher than the thirty-five-foot principal structure height. So moving on to R2, so I did include, we still have it in our ordinance because there are lots that are under this R2 single-family zoning that we need to make sure we are aware of what those setbacks and things are. But the single-family zoning that was in place from 2017 to 2019 allowed minimum lot areas of seventy-five hundred square feet, minimum lot widths of sixty feet, depths of one hundred and fifteen feet, front yard setbacks of twenty-five feet, rear yard setbacks of thirty feet, side yard setbacks of eight feet each side, a maximum impervious surface of forty percent, and then a max height of thirty-five feet with a minimum floor area of fourteen hundred square feet. So you can see, as I referenced earlier, when we were in the situation of choose-your zoning, this was typically the zoning that was picked for rezoning. Currently, two-family homes, as I mentioned, duplexes are allowed in R2 districts. Those bulk regulations are ten thousand square feet, a minimum lot area, a minimum lot width of fifty feet, depth of one hundred and ten, front of twenty-five, rear thirty, ten-foot each side side yard setback, forty-five percent impervious surface max, a thirty-five-foot height, and then a twelve hundred square foot per unit minimum floor area, so twenty-four hundred square feet per building, per duplex. R2, the same bulk regulations are included with, again, as I mentioned to Commissioner Vansky, some inconsistencies related to front yard setbacks, rear yard, side yard, impervious surface max heights that I at least preliminarily am not finding a good reason as to why we'd want those to be different in R1 or R2. For example, this indicates a thirty-five-foot each side side yard setback, so a seventy-foot building separation versus a twenty-five-foot in R1. So those are some of the things that we've, we've got on our list to take a look at. And then similar accessory uses, same concept. Some of the side yard setbacks are inconsistent. You'll notice a few additional five-yard, five-foot side yard setbacks in the R2 district, but otherwise, all of the other regulations are identical to the R1 accessory use regulations. So then, just as a point of comparison, as we're looking at these minimum requirements, I did put together a table, I also included this in your background packet, of some of the, either in application or recently approved PUD bulk regulations, just to get an idea of where some of these recent developments, I think I went back five years, and I did only include those that came under PUD, where they're falling. So the shores of Marsh Lake, which you all recently approved preliminary plat for, they have a ten thousand square foot minimum lot area, sixty-five foot width, one hundred and sixty foot depth, twenty-five foot front yard setback, thirty rear, seven and a half each side, and five thousand square feet. The Rolling Hills South property, which as we indicated is really being proposed as those smaller villa lots, so you'll see quite a reduction resulting in increased density of those lot areas and widths. And then the Hunters Brook obviously had three different housing types, some of those a little closer to the shores of Marsh Lake PUD, some of those closer to the villa product from Rolling Hills South, all varying slightly in different areas. And then Madeline Trail is another recently approved development with eighty-six hundred, sixty-five square feet minimum lot area, sixty-eight foot wide lots, one hundred and thirty depth, thirty front and rear, and nine-foot side yard setbacks. So you can just see kind of the variation in just these developments that have been approved in the last year. And then the next table also indicates some of those developments going back three, four, or five years, some of the Lake Town developments, Waterford Landing, Whispering Hills, and where those came into play. So as I mentioned, staff has identified a few things just to draw to the Commission's attention. I'm sure you, again, will have other questions or things we'll want to add to our ticker list of things we want to look at and talk about. But just some of our observations are, of course, first and foremost, are the current permitted and conditional uses adequate and accurate within those residential districts? Are the bulk regulations for those permitted and conditional uses and accessory uses as well adequate? Are they where we want them to be? One note, and staff has brought this up previously, is that currently our single-family medium density, which our comp plan identifies medium density as six to twelve units per acre, it's not achievable under our R1 or R2 zoning, and it must rely on PUD. So question for the Commission, is that adequate? Is that, it certainly is a way to achieve that medium density, or should the city try to incorporate achievable medium density into a zoning district? Are there ways to incentivize affordable housing, knowing that that is a high priority both of this Commission and the City Council? For example, are floor area minimums too high? You know, one idea we've tossed around internally is allowing increased density if homes are smaller, so setting a floor area max for some of those. But again, just spitballing some thoughts. As I mentioned previously, the bulk regulation tables are inconsistent with permitted uses, and they should be updated for clarity, as well as some of those inconsistencies with those non-housing permitted uses between R1 and R2. For example, a nursing home has a max height of forty feet in R1, but only thirty-five feet in R2. Those types of things. Another note, accessory dwelling units are a conditional use in both districts, but we really do lack clear definition and any bulk regulations, setbacks, and things related with ADUs, so something that should likely be added to the ordinance. And then one that we do get calls and questions about occasionally, especially in the pandemic, home occupations are a permitted use in both of those districts, but again, they're really not well-defined as to what constitutes a home occupation and if there are any conditions or regulations related to that. And that, Chair, concludes my presentation, and I will turn it over for some discussion. As I mentioned, we're not necessarily looking for specific direction this evening, but thoughts, ideas, initial feedback, things you'd like us to bring back in the future related to this topic.
Very good. Thank you, Marty. So when I read through the packet, I said, so here's my homework, is to go through, go through the packet and break it down and, you know, see what, see what truly makes sense at the same time. Thoughts?
No, I mean, I share your perspective. There's good discussion items. I think it sounds like your approach is we're going to lay these things out in pieces and bring them all together and say, this is our agreed-upon discussion items, and tick through those so we can get it distilled down to where we achieve consistency and we try to target goals and objectives.
I think that's accurate.
I guess the other item I would have is not that we need to copycat anybody, but what are other cities' setbacks ordinances? I mean, just what are we competing against, I guess? Is probably a bigger, you know, if they can go to Chaska or Chan or Waconia, you know, we want to, that ties us to it, but what are information?
Comparables.
I mean, that's, that's a great point because we're in a very competitive market at the same time. And what is, what is our competitors doing? Yeah?
Right, and I think we have to take a balanced approach in saying, you know, what does our community want versus what is a competitive pressure?
Yeah.
There may be a competitive pressure, but it may not be palatable to how we've chosen to develop and grow Victoria.
Maybe they have standards.
Right, and so we may have to say, we're willing to forego certain opportunities to maintain a consistency and a vision that has been laid out by residents and City Council.
Well, I agree with that, and the whole affordable housing thing ties into that, right?
Absolutely.
Part of it's the price of land. Part of it is, is that what our community wants? Obviously, we try to get a better tax base, bring in industry, but even if you did all that, would that happen? How much of our, not just our zoning requirements, but then our other building requirements, our building fees? You know, you got to put sod down, you can put X number of trees in. I mean, there's a lot of other things that could, could really influence affordable housing, not just the zoning piece of it.
And it may be prudent to assign that to a zone, but we need to be careful so that it doesn't get abused by future commissions and councils that, oh, R2 is like, we're going to create the bad part of town. So we need to be cognizant of that.
Why do we give it all away with PUDs? I guess that might be the other question. We have all these, we have all these, and that's one of the things when the one councilman going through the two, the Marsh Lake and the other one, the seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback that we all talk about as being not ideal, not the best, not the preferred, but yet we continue to approve these. And it sounds, looks like in the past, for the most part, they held at eight, good or bad, but if the rule's ten.
And there's only one that was ten in the last five years. I think that's the concern, because if I'm a developer and I'm looking at this, I'm like, well, I'm going to ask for seven and a half. But when's the time where the developer comes and asks for five? When's the time where the developer comes and asks for five? Well, it's 10 minutes from now if we keep approving seven and a half.
Affordable housing might need three. I don't know.
Affordable housing is going to be in a multifamily setting, so you do...
You mean a apartment?
Yes. I mean, it's rare to have it in any other format, so just because of land cost. I mean, so it will be likely in a more dense area of town where that would be permitted.
And of course, that does get to the point, what is affordable housing?
Well, it's defined by the Met Council, and I think the Met Council is the group that has some parameters on cities and what we need to have within our city, and that ties to funding, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Commissioner Moore.
Do you provide?
Members of the commission, there is an equation that the Met Council defines. I want to say, if you are... And that's what makes affordable housing different for every individual, because if you're spending less than 30% of your annual income, don't quote me on 30%, but that seems to stick in my head, then on your monthly payments, then that is affordable to you. So, I think that's another part of this broader discussion, is that affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean, you know, voucher-provided housing, that sort of thing. It's really, you know, we try to think of it as workforce housing. Can the teachers, can the first responders, can the service industry folks afford to, affordably afford to live in our community?
There's actually another entire sector of senior affordable, because when you think of someone who's getting more of a fixed income, because what they do is they look at the median income in this county, which is quite high, so even an affordable, and it's either 30, 40, 50, or even up to 60%. So, there's different levels of affordability. It'd be interesting to see what the Met Council is looking for, for Victoria to have as ratios. I don't know what that is.
And it may be that we might be wise to use standardized affordable housing terminology, such as things that are based on area median income. And then, for what Marty's talking about, you know, we would like our public works, employees to be able to live in the city. That, to me, is less affordable, but rather the term accessible. And so, we drive affordable and accessible and try to strike a balance in that perspective.
Practical affordable.
Correct.
But it is. It's true. Like, if you work here, it'd be nice to live here.
Absolutely.
Not that there's so many places to work here.
What's a working wage, right?
Question?
My first thoughts are, between R1 and R2, there isn't a huge amount of difference, and is there an opportunity to create something with one or the other? I mean, to me, it looked like R2 had all the same rules as R1. It just, you could have 7,500 square feet instead of 12,000 square feet. Is there an opportunity to manipulate or to work with, that's the wrong word, to tweak R2 so that it would be advantageous for something like affordable housing or more affordable housing or something along those lines?
Commissioner Pedersen, chair members of the commission, those are certainly things that we, Isaac and I, have talked about internally. Again, just very pre-cooked ideas, not necessarily ready for primetime, but there's different ways of achieving that. One example would be, our comp plan does identify land areas in our growth area that are for medium-density housing, so there's an opportunity that you could have in R2 district that it makes medium-density achievable, and it's only allowable in those areas that are identified for medium-density. So, it takes away a little bit of that dealer's choice, so you're not going to get those lower regulations or restrictions in the R1 or the single-family low-density housing areas. Another idea that I've alluded to, actually Isaac's idea, was is there an opportunity to set a maximum floor area requirement? So, houses can, if you're going to use smaller lots, smaller widths, you are maxed out on how big the house you can build is on those lots, so you're going to be able to achieve greater density, but we're going to cap where, how big that house on that lot can be. So, just some of the things we've talked about internally as we start moving through forward with this process.
In this process, we would like to have pretty much printer-ready when?
You know, there's nothing specifically driving a timeline on this. As I mentioned, I'm expecting it's going to take us at least four meetings just to kind of get through the background of this, so we're probably talking through October. And then, I imagine we'll have quite a few just more in-depth discussion sessions. So, you know, I'd be surprised if we get something done before the end of the year. It's probably more likely a six-month process, hopefully not as long as Shoreland ordinance, but if it needs to be, then that's okay, too.
Well, it's all in the detail, isn't it?
Well, I guess we're kind of going to have you guys to help take us through some smaller bites.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
To conclude pieces of it.
Yeah, and just as a little bit of foresight into what I'm thinking, so we provided a little bit of background here for the R1 and R2. I think at the next meeting, we'll talk a little bit more on the higher-density districts, the R3 and R4, just to give you a similar background as to what we're looking at, kind of point out some of the things that we observe in the code that probably need to be updated. Then, I think we'll spend at least one session just on PUD, just talking about the PUD ordinance and what that entails, too. So, potentially, three more background meetings and then coming back at the next meeting after that with compiling some of this and bringing some of that more information forward.
Very good. Thank you. Any other thoughts on the topic? With that, we will close this item out. Moving on to miscellaneous, a productive meeting tonight, a good meeting. And it is all about the detail, isn't it? And the presentation that Jeff Wagen provided was an awful lot of detail, and, you know, that's how we're going to get to an agreement on that. So, I was quite impressed, quite impressed with that. And it's all about the detail, and it's all about the questions at the same time, too. Anything additional from staff?
Yes, Chair. One note, and I will send an email about this tomorrow, but if everyone can, if you're available, hold your calendars for 5:00 PM on Monday, November 8th. We are planning or hoping to do a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the City Council. We're intending to bring in, and this is something the city did a few years back, but bring in a panel from the Urban Land Institute to have a discussion on, specifically related to affordable workforce housing, options and opportunities, and innovative ways that cities can try to attract these types of developments. So, the previous panel, ULI did one of these panels prior to my arrival, but it sounds like it was really well-received, good information. They actually bring in industry experts, developers from different areas, to talk from their perspective about the challenges and things that cities can do to help attract those types of things. So, as I mentioned, I'll send out an email reminder tomorrow, but if you can, if you're available, try to hold November 8th, 5:00 PM for that joint workshop.
Excellent. Thank you. And Terry has a presentation on the previous...
On the August 23rd City Council meeting, some announcements they made. It looks like they are reviewing some tax levy information on September 13th, Capital Project bus tour on September 20th, maybe the school district's coming in to talk about a potential fall referendum that's also on the 13th. Market to the end of September. Open forum. Lady talked about ovarian cancer. This is Ovarian Cancer Month. Color is teal. She was a ovarian cancer survivor, no early test for it, so she was bringing awareness to that. Lady talked about predatory ordinance, how they have a task force established, looking at state support for ankle monitoring. They're doing some back-to-school stuff, working with schoolteachers and guidance counselors, just making sure they're prepared, and how to have a safe trick-or-treat. The consent agenda was adopted. They did approve the shores of Marsh Lake. Again, comments on the 7.5 setback. The Rolling Hills South, again, doesn't help affordable housing, had some real back-and-forth on kind of the whole rental shift.
Yes, yep.
So, I think they were kind of as intrigued by that as we were. And then, we talk about affordable housing, but they bring up, gee, I wish it had a three-car garage, which... Or maybe it was, I wish I had a three-car garage, but I think it was his point. The expectations. And then, there was quite a bit of discussion on the Wasserman Lake Preserve, the trail not being ADA compliant, which was over $3 million, so it seems hard to believe that wouldn't have been specified. They talked about like an all-terrain wheelchair, putting down some grates, but ultimately, they approved spending $134,000, getting it out of either the Trails Fund or the Park Fund to make that compliant. And a portion of it already is. It was extending the ADA compliance out further. Alyssa was there, gave some updates on the water conservation. They talked about neighborhood growth, 1,670 new neighbors have come here, total pop of 10,546, 11 new acres of parkland, 243 acres annexed into the city, how the city responded to COVID with work from home, more online services. Opportunity for some hands-on CPR, I think through the fire department, some budget discussions, but for the most part, that was it.
Good, good, yeah.
And then, well, affordable housing. And then, I got into affordable housing, affordable housing. I think even Laura's name got mentioned.
Now, it's my understanding that a bulk of the city council watches the Planning Commission meeting at the same time, so they're pretty much up to speed on what has transpired. And, but the rental homes, intriguing. I mean, it was very genuinely intriguing, so they, I guess their conclusion was the same as our conclusion.
I think disappointment that the rental rates weren't more affordable.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, $50,000 a year in just rent, and then, of course, everything else associated with it. So, any other thoughts on it? Hearing none. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, excellent, very good. Thank you. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.
You. Thanks, everybody.